Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. For the record, at six thirty P. M. Ms. Bliss is not present. Councilmember Kerner?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Menchow?
Present.
With six members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. A reminder that we are live streaming tonight's meeting. If there's anybody that would like to speak before council that's here, I'd ask that you use the microphone. We do that so that the people that are live streaming can hear what is being said as part of the council meeting. Also, if you do have the opportunity to speak and you are a visitor here, I'd ask that you state your name and if you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident or not. We did have, no one signed up as part of Citizens to be Heard tonight. Is there anybody here that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak as part of Citizens to be heard? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Tonight, we have two proclamations that we're presenting. The first is to the Human Resources Department for Human Resources Professionals Day. And Joanna, would you mind joining me? Bring him back up? Whereas the Human Resources Department works hard each day to ensure that the city of Fair Oaks Ranch is staffed with high-quality employees and that those employees have a good environment in which to work. And whereas the Human Resources Department is instrumental in recruiting, selecting, resourcing, and retaining quality. And whereas the Human Resources Department plays a key role in fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by allowing for professional growth and development and keeping employees informed about policies, working conditions, compensation, and benefits. And whereas the Human Resource Department monitors and manages current and future workforce trends, organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, and ethical and social responsibility. And whereas the Human Resource Department is an important part of the city leadership and is vital to the overall productivity and efficiency of Fair Oaks Ranch workforce. And whereas the Human Resource Department is valued and respected department that sustains the city's most important assets, which is our people. Now and therefore, I, Gregory C. Maxton, Mayor of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, do hereby designate September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, as Human Resources Professional Day. And I urge all citizens to express their appreciation to our Human Resource Team members for their dedication and their commitment to Fair Oaks Ranch employees and their residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And Brian? The second proclamation that we have tonight is the National Information Technology Professionals Day. And whereas the National Information Technology I.T. Professional Day has been celebrated on the third Tuesday of every September since two thousand fifteen. And whereas this year it falls on September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch wants to recognize the I.T. experts who ensure that the city computers, applications, storage, networking, infrastructure, and processes to create, store, secure, and exchange all forms of electronic data are performing at optimal levels. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch and the I.D. Park I.T. Department consist of two employees, the I.T. Manager, Brian, and the Network Specialist, Jason McDonald. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch I.D. I.T. Department oversees software programs for the city with the goal of ensuring smooth, efficient, around-the-clock operations for all city departments, including city council, building codes, city secretary, court, engineering, finance, public safety, and public works. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch I.D. T. Department provides twenty-four-seven support for telecommunications systems, cell phones, internet firewalls, servers, desktops, laptops, camera systems, tablets, switches, and et cetera for both office and field personnel. And whereas the City of Fair Oaks Ranch's I.T. Department continues to focus on identifying and meeting new challenges in key areas such as cybersecurity, state and federal guidelines for data management, and security, shifting technology trends, et cetera. Now and therefore, I, Gregory C. Maxton, the Mayor of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, do hereby designate September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, as I.T. Professionals Day. I urge all citizens to express their appreciation to our I.T. Team members for their dedication and their commitment to Fair Oaks Ranch's council, their employees, and residents. So, thank you very much, Brian. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. It's a pretty big list in there. And turn it back over to Joanna. We're going to introduction of two new employees.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am much more comfortable on this side of the podium than that one. So, tonight, we're actually very excited to introduce two new employees. So, I'll start with our newest police officer, David Perez, Jr. He unfortunately was not able to be here tonight, but I did want to say a little bit about him. So, David actually comes to us as a U.S. Navy veteran, where he served around four years as a logistics specialist. And so, he is a recent graduate from ACOG and received his police officer license. And so, we are still very excited to have him join our police team and our City of Fair Oaks Ranch employee family. And then, the next one that I have, if Ms. Rosie Vella will come up and stand over here next to me, to my left, as this will be your first time. We are introducing Rosie as our new Director of Finance. Rosie comes to us with a master's in business administration from what I believe is Texas A&amp;M and Corpus Christi, so maybe another Aggie to join our team. She is a certified public accountant and also a certified government finance officer. And she comes to us with over twenty-nine years of finance experience. And many, many of those years were served in the public sector, some in healthcare as well. So, she's got a diverse background. And she has been a leader and a mentor in many different organizations, boards, committees. And so, we are very excited to have her joining our robust team here at the City of Fair Oaks Ranch as our new Director of Finance. So, join me in welcoming Rosie Vella. All right, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. It's always great when we get to introduce new employees to our team, so thank you. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing that we'll conduct tonight. To conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and the two thousand twenty-three proposed budget and tax rate. And I'd like to start off with a few comments. Our budgeting process over the last seven years has come a long way. This year, we started off with losing our Finance Director. But I can say that the remainder of the team did step up and continued the quality service that we've become expected of from our finance team. Summer Fleming did a fantastic job filling in as our interim director for the year. And honestly, I'd like to say that it was a great job by all in our finance department and want to say thanks to them for what they did on a daily basis. And that includes Scott, Summer, Julie, Amanda, and Clayton. Personally, I want to thank you all for what you do every day. And I'd also like to welcome Rosie to the team. You come in at a exciting time as we've just about to pass the budget. But I know that myself and everyone up here look forward to working with you in the future. But some accomplishments that we've seen from our finance team in this year include the Government Finance Officer Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. They also received the Government Finance Officer Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And this year, they also completed the city's first popular annual finance report. It's just some of the things that distinguish them, make them stand out from other finance departments, and really shows what they do for our city on a daily basis. With the budget last year, we focused on completing projects that we identified through our comprehensive plan and through our multiple capital improvement plans. And this year, after reviewing the budget, I think we are doing the same. First, this year's budget covers the maintenance operations costs to conduct the needed day-to-day activities to run our city while taking care of our equipment and our infrastructure which belongs to our city. Second, we were able to continue to maintain the city's operating reserve. And then, next, we looked at the major projects that we put into the budget for this year. It includes the continuance with the road maintenance program to maintain a pavement condition index average over eighty-five. I will continue and complete the dewatering press to our wastewater treatment plant. We have the addition of two school resource officers, one to each of our elementary schools that are located within our city. We're looking at the reconstruction of Post Oak Trail, sidewalk reconstructions on Battle Intents and on Detail Corn. And we're looking at the repair of Stoll Water Issues on Rolling Acres, on Silver Spur, Turf Paradise, and Tavoli Way. All big projects that we've been tracking for many years that we've identified need to be repaired. And then, we're looking at the design in the reconstruct, the design of the reconstruction of Ammon Road, that portion that is within our city limits, and a portion of Detail Corn. I believe it is a good and a prudent use of the funds which are available to our city. And we were able to complete this and add this to our budget while also lowering our tax rate two point two seven cents. I look forward to another year of making good progress while protecting the future of Fair Oaks Ranch and also taking care of our residents. That, I'll turn it over to Tobin for any comments that you have.
Wow, Mayor, I think you covered it all. I don't know if Scott's going to have anything left to present. A few quick comments. As the council just thinks, the staff, I'd like to thank the council. There was a lot of effort that went into developing this year's budget and dedicated a lot of time. So, please know that we appreciate that, and your willingness to be proactive in the process truly adds value. I also want to reiterate what the mayor said and thank the staff, not only the finance team that's here, Scott and Julie, but all of the department heads and the mid-level managers. You're developing a cost-build budget based off strategic planning initiatives. That's a challenging task that I give them each year. And I just want the team to know that I appreciate what you do and you guys perform at a high level all the time. And so, thank you very much. And Mayor, I'll turn it over to Scott to start the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Hughesen-Gay, Assistant City Manager. We'll start before the public hearing with a brief, promised brief overview of the proposed budget and tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Following my presentation, the council will officially open the public hearing for comments and testimony. We'll then close the public hearing. After that time, council will consider two ordinances under the consideration portion of the council agenda, one for the property tax rate and one for the annual budget. All city ordinances require two readings, so we will have, we have scheduled a special meeting for next Thursday to consider the second reading for each ordinance. At next week's reading, there will also be a resolution to ratify the tax rate if there is a proposed increase over the no-new-revenue rate, which is proposed in the, in the current proposed budget. So, as been mentioned, the budget is the culmination of a process that begins in March. Departments enter the requests, starting at that time. That is followed by internal review by the Finance Department and management along with the departments. And we began formal budget workshops with the council in July. That led up to the formal budget submittal on August eighteenth and to where we are now with the public hearings and the budget ordinances. Again, the goal is to pass the first reading for two separate ordinances this week with the second readings at next week's special meeting. The general fund budget includes just under ten million dollars in operating revenues and expenditures. It also uses about three point nine million dollars of unallocated fund balance for capital and strategic action plan projects, primarily for drainage and streets, as been mentioned. Based on the most recent budget changes and updated current year projections, the proposed budget would end the year with about sixty-nine thousand dollars remaining in unallocated fund balance. The highlights have largely been covered, but again, the budget does include a property tax rate reduction of about two point three cents per one hundred dollars of taxable valuation. It does maintain existing services while adding two school resource officers and a mechanic position. It does maintain the city's adopted operating reserve of six months of expenditures. And as mentioned, it allocates over three million dollars to new capital projects for, for roadways and drainage. Overall, budgeted revenue is up nine point one percent from the adopted budget. This large increase is due primarily to how we are calculating property tax revenue this year. Specifically, tax value under appeal is included in our revenue calculation, whereas the city had not included those numbers in the past years. Had actual, had, had those numbers been included, the actual property tax increase is closer to three point four percent, and that was the basis for, for the proposed budget this year. The second largest increase on the revenue side is miscellaneous revenue, and that is simply a reimbursement for the aforementioned school resource officer program from the school district. We also expect increases to franchise fees and interest earnings with decreases to residential building permits. Operating expenditures are up about seven percent overall. Personnel is the primary driver. This is a combination of both across-the-board adjustments as well as an increase in last year's health insurance costs that were not included in the adopted budget and are reflected in this year's proposed budget. Finally, we talked about some of the projects already. The general funds, funds are strategic action plan funds for strategic and capital projects, of which there is over three point eight, three point eight million dollars allocated. The city's total fund balance in governmental funds, which is the non-utility funds, includes the adopted six-month operating reserve of about four point five million dollars, nearly four point six. It also includes restricted funds for municipal court fees and the city's equipment replacement fund, among others. In the utility fund, we expect to have an operating surplus in the water fund with a deficit in the wastewater fund. A proposed change in the wastewater rate structure would remedy the structural deficit if the council votes to implement those changes early next year. However, this budget does not assume any changes to the city's rate structure at this time. There is only one proposed rate change in the utility. The surface water fee for our service agreement with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority will increase to fifteen dollars and one cent per month, per, per account to cover increased water purchase from G.B.R.A. Again, like the general fund, the overall utility operating budget is, is expected to increase about seven percent. That's, again, it's due primarily to the personnel and healthcare changes from the prior adopted budget, as in the general fund. And we expect to end the next fiscal year with a total net position in the utility of about sixteen point three million dollars. Net position is effectively how much the utility is worth in total. Of that net position, the majority of the value is in the utility's fixed assets, plants, wells, lines, et cetera. Utility is also expected to end the fiscal year with an operating reserve of about two point five million dollars, which is also, coincidentally, about six months' worth of operating expenditures in the utility. Finally, the proposed tax rate in the F.Y. two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget is thirty-two point nine one cents per one hundred dollars of valuation. Again, this is about a two point three cent reduction from the current tax rate of thirty-five point eighteen and just slightly above the calculated no-new-revenue rate for the next fiscal year. We all know that valuations have increased significantly, particularly residential this past year. And the council adopted exemptions earlier this year for qualifying over sixty-five and disabled homesteads that will take effect in the next fiscal year. Therefore, this proposed tax rate would equate to an estimated tax reduction of about forty-five dollars for qualifying over sixty-five homesteads. Again, on average, non-qualifying homesteads would see an increase of a little over fifty dollars from the current year. Again, that's using an average homestead value as the basis for calculation. So, because this is a public hearing, I'll yield back to the mayor and council for public input. If there are additional questions on the budget itself, that can be taken up during the first readings of the ordinances. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. And Christine, I have the time now. It is six fifty-one. We are opening the public hearing. The, we had to sign up for anyone that wanted to speak as part of the public hearing. There was not anybody that signed up on the list. Is there anybody here tonight that did not get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak as part of the public hearing? No takers? And Christine, I have the time now. It is six fifty-two, and we are closing the public hearing. And I'll provide an opportunity for council members to provide any input at this time. All right. Christine, anything else we need on the public hearing? Tobin, anything else you want to add? With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight. First is the approval of the August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Special Meeting Minutes. Second is the approval of the September first, two thousand twenty-two Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. And third is the approval of a resolution reaffirming the city's investment policy. Is there any council member that would like to take one of these consent items and move it to consideration for discussion? That, then, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Chesley, and a second?
My second.
A second from Laura. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To the opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And next, we'll move on to our consideration and discussion items for tonight. First is the consideration and the possible action adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three pay schedule for general government and police employees. And I'll turn this over to Scott.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Scott Hughesen-Gay, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, for this first consideration item, we will discuss the across-the-board adjustments as presented in the proposed budget. We'll review the compensation study's key findings and recommendations, and we'll review data, including the Employment Cost Index and benchmark employer data as directed by the council at previous meetings. So, earlier this week, I had the opportunity to speak with the mayor about this topic, and we thought it'd be a good idea to look at the, the origins of the compensation study and why we have it. The city's current compensation plan and pay schedules, as, as I think we all know, were adopted in November of two thousand twenty. The comp plan recommended and the council approved updated salary and benefit packages with the new pay schedules. And the specific policy direction of that plan was to align the city's pay schedules so that the city would be in the top third of the market and remain there so that the city could reach, not just recruit, but retain the best talents possible. The study compared thirteen benchmark, or compared our city to thirteen benchmark employers, which were ultimately selected by the council at that time. The, the completed salary survey at that time found that most of the benchmark jobs were below the top third of our peers, and over seventy percent of our job classifications were behind the top third by double digits. At the time, the city did not always regularly adjust overall pay structures, although in recent years, the city had made some adjustments so as to not further behind during that process leading up to two thousand twenty.
Thank yours.
I was off by one, wasn't I? But, so, the study included a few recommendations that included, as mentioned, that's the mouse that got me. Aligning the, aligning the city's pay schedules with the top third of the market, as mentioned, and making future adjustments on and across-the-board basis. That recommendation also included That recommendation also included making adjustments of at least the Employment Cost Index, as reported by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And finally, the plan recommended reviewing supplemental data, including calls to benchmark employers and review of other supplemental data. So, going through that adopted policy, the first data set in the adopted policy is the Employment Cost Index, or ECI. The policy calls for looking at the salaries and wages portion of ECI data for all private industry workers and state and local government workers. Those are collectively referred to as civilian workers in the BLS reports. As of June 2022, civilian ECI for salaries and wages was 5.3%, so that would be considered the minimum at which council would consider an across-the-board adjustment per policy. The comp study also calls for looking at the ECI for the region to which Texas is assigned. So, going back to that policy, we did go back to look specifically for that regional data, and after some amount of searching, we did locate the ECI for the west-south-central, easy for me to say, west-south-central census region, which includes Texas, and that west-south-central region ECI was 7.1% as of the end of June. So, taking those two ECI figures together, one would find a range of 5.3% to 7.1%, which, as a simple average, would be 6.2%. Following the initial staff recommendation back in July, we did conduct a survey of the city's benchmark employers from the compensation study. We found that our peer cities have taken a variety of approaches to adjustments for the upcoming year. That's include, some have done across-the-board adjustments, tiered adjustments, extra-market adjustments for certain positions, and in a few cases, cities did all-new comp plans, much like we did a couple of years ago. So, the overall, overall, the adjustments had a pretty wide range based on individual circumstances, but by looking at an average of the minimum and maximum adjustments in the different jurisdictions, throwing out the obvious outliers, like 44% for police, we get to an average increase of about 7% plus or minus for our benchmark employers. Similarly, we had previously distributed to city council, I guess in the context of supplemental data, a survey conducted by Region 8 of the Texas City Management Association that showed basically similar results and similar variances and methodologies as well. The composite average for these cities was conservatively about 5%, again, based on a variety of adjustments that those cities used in trying to make their own adjustments to their own plans or lack of plans in many cases, as we'll talk about in a second. But, so finally, with those different pieces of data, we can look at a summary of the ECI data and the ranges and averages for our survey data as well. In general, we would recommend, again, 5.3% is the floor based on the civilian ECI, and I think we could conceivably go as high as 7% without being considered an outlier, according to the data. That puts our recommended adjustment of 6.4% almost exactly in the middle of the range, which is usually where we want to be. The city, again, has an adopted pay schedule that's just two years old, and as such, we should be essentially keeping up with basic cost of living factors without having to make adjustments on an individual basis. That's the point of having the comp plan that we have in place. So, the total adjustment the council voted on previously was 6.4% across the board. That total is reflected in the proposed budget. The council awarded half of that adjustment, 3.2% effective in July. So, the recommendation is to adopt the remainder of the budget for FY 22-23 at 3.2%. Again, as previously reported through our budget discussions, the, this 3.2% would have an impact of about $145,000 to the general fund, about $49,000 to the utility fund. And again, these amounts are currently included in the proposed budget per council directive. So, I guess, concluding this, I'd like to take just a moment to express our staff appreciation for allowing us to take another look at the adopted policy as written. In earlier presentations, we probably adopted under a poor assumption that most of us already had a base level of knowledge about the compensation plan, but speaking with other cities going through the survey process, I think we should take, and I know I do, as a great matter of pride that we have an adopted plan in place. Several do not have a plan, or they've moved away from their plans, and they're now playing catch-up on an ad hoc basis. So, thanks to prior actions by the city council and by management, we're merely talking about how to adjust our current adopted plan by policy, and to me, that's an advantageous place to be, especially given all the economic chaos over the last couple of years. So, I think the recommendation is solid, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Any questions from?
If we adopt the 6.4%, does that mean that we will have everybody in the top third? Because we've gotten conflicting information on that. We've been told that people are going to be below the living wage even if we do that.
Sure. And the answer to that question is, to the best of our knowledge. Now, we would, we'd have to go back and conduct a whole new survey to confirm position by position where everybody is, and that's why cities do whole new comp plans every, you know, five to seven years to ensure that we're retaining our position. But, given where we were two years ago, given that we believe we've kept up with the market, we think we'll be there. Now, the concept of living wage is separate from being in the top third of the market. Living wage is a, is an economic concept that essentially calculates by different census regions based on a basket of goods, not the CPI basket of goods, but a different separate of goods, what a family of two or four would be expected to earn and live in relative financial independence. We did look briefly this week at the different scenarios for the living wage for Bear County, Kendall County, Kamal County. And it also depends on, are we looking at a family of four, a family of one worker, two children? So, the factors vary, but if we look at just, again, just on this, this factor of, of living wage as a, really an academic concept, for a family of four, two adults working, I believe the Bear County average under that study was about $22.23, I think, between $22 and $23. They're be, I think, up through grades 18 would be under that, only at the minimum step, mind you. So, at step one, those grades would be below that threshold. But again, that's, that's relative based on where our employees are specifically slotted, their family conditions, so it's really a matter of, are we, at our minimum thresholds, are we, are we at the living wage? In most cases, I think we are, but again, none of this relates back to our actual adopted policy, which is to look at the ECI and to look at the top third of the market. I know that's a long answer, but I hope that helps.
I think we were all the same at some point that we were just, like, at the living wage and the, what, yeah.
Sure.
If we keep it in the top third, top third, I think that's, as we're, as we're, as we're, 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 we're,
that will be a bigger impact now that isn't going to get changed in the near future? You know what I mean? I don't want to spend $300,000, $400,000 designing something that then ends up in the trash bin. Because two years from now, when we get around to actually turning dirt on this, as you say, you know, now we have a realignment or now Bear County's coming in and wanting to do this or that, or Kendall County or whoever. I just, I don't want to see us waste $300,000 to $400,000 designing something that may not ever happen. And if it does happen, it's only for a small portion of the road where we've got a bunch of other roads in our city where that's not the case. That, that may, or, you know, benefit from that a little bit more.
So I think I, I think I'd like to understand what your motion is specifically related to the budget. What are you proposing? Are you proposing to not fund that? And what would we do with the money? Because we're at a point where we have to approve a budget. And so I, I'd like to understand the alternative proposal that you'd like to propose so, so we could discuss that.
So I would, my motion, I guess, is to just remove the Ammon Road reconstruction design for $365,286. And for that to go back into the pot, to be used somewhere else. I don't... To be determined.
For clarification, are we saying we're just going to remove the label of Ammon Road but leave the $365,000 in the budget?
Remove it back to the unallocated fund?
I would, yeah. I would put it back into the unallocated fund.
So, so if I understand, your motion has not been seconded yet. Is you're proposing moving 360, $365,286 away from this specific project and back into the unallocated fund?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I'll make a second for discussion purposes.
Okay. Any other comments from council on this? Yeah, Roy?
So, just to get to kind of understand the effects of this motion on the floor, it seems like, back to Mayor Potem Kerner's point, that the appropriate approach would be that we would go and revisit our road maintenance CIP to decide which roads to allocate that to, which is redoing the extensive work that we already did. Is my understanding correct of what the next step would be? I'm trying to understand from the, you, you made the motion like what you would see as the, the follow-up would be if we're going to put it back in unallocated. But the intent in putting it in allocated is still to allocate it to road work, as I understand it.
Could be used for anything.
So what process would we use to reassign the use of those funds?
I think if it goes into unallocated, it could be used for roadwork or anything else that we think is a priority. And if it is a road, it's a road.
I have a separate question, kind of on the budget, unrelated necessarily and sort of related to this.
We have a... Okay, go ahead.
Is it on the motion?
It's support, that's why I seconded it, so I could ask a question. Do we, do we, do we know? And Councilwoman Kerner had asked this last time about the unallocated budget for the Civic Center and if we still had the funds, the $600,000 set aside and we were adding to it the portion that was in the budget. And I would be curious for that answer or if this is something that, that, those funds could be allocated for.
Yes, Councilmember Munchal. We, we did go back and look at the history and it, it dates back at least three fiscal years. And I'm going to try and give you the short version of that where the $600,000 is not in the current budget, was not in, it was ruled in last year's budget as part of the city hall remodel. Those are originally two different projects. They're combined into one when it was re-scoped and rebid. So at one point, we had essentially three different budgets for a Civic Center, a, a city hall, and the MDD portion of the Civic Center. Obviously, the MDD portion is pending further deliberation, so that's not in. And the, the two other portions were combined. So it's, so it's not currently in the budget. And that's as short as I can make it.
Grant Watson, I'll be Director of Public Works. So if the intent is to realign some of those funds to a different road CIP project, just to refresh everyone's memory, I think we had a total of six planned projects we're addressing this year in the budget, the Ballon Intense Sidewalk repairs, closing the Deets sidewalk gap as well. We're also funding the Post Oak Trail reconstruction as part of the HSIP project. And we're also planning to start the design on Deets. So that just leaves the Rolling Acres Trail reconstruction and the Ammon Road reconstruction. And in order of priority, I believe I used the acronym DARP. So it's Deets, then Ammon Road, then Rolling Acres Trail, and Post Oak in that order of priority.
And when you say start the design of Deets, the money that we have allocated isn't going to cover the full design?
It's intended to cover half of the design, the start of it.
So if we put this money for the Ammon Road reconstruction design back in, would that then cover the full design of Deets?
It's a long design process. So we kind of divided it across two years to fund half of the design this year and then half, the other half of the design the following year.
Okay. And then none of the rolling acres has been included in this?
Correct.
And so we, could we allocate this to rolling acres?
I don't remember the amount for rolling acres, but theoretically could, yes.
I have a question for Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
So with this motion, we're moving $365 plus dollars into the unallocated fund. We don't have to tonight decide what we want to allocate that to. We could leave it there and then at a future meeting choose to allocate it to a project, whether it be the Civic Center or another road project. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That is the motion on the floor right now.
Then I have a follow-up question to that. If we leave it in and allocate it to Ammon Road, the flip side of that, we cannot then, like undo that. That money would then be just for...
You could always undo it.
I mean, I just want to make it clear for everybody.
You, the council could elect to come back later and remove it, transfer it to another project. This is, this project would be above the purchasing threshold where a contract would come back to this council anyway for consideration. So you would get at least a couple more bites at this apple, so to speak. But yeah, you can, you can leave it in, do nothing. You can remove it, move back to allocate fund balance. You have several options.
Roy, yeah. Back to my point earlier, that, that's the point I was trying to make, that the budget is just a plan on how we, right now, envision allocating funds. And that plan can change based on new thoughts, new data. And, and so the idea is, if we're going to leave the $365,000 in the budget, which drives the tax rate, I agree with what Councilwoman Kerner is saying, that we can make that decision later. There's a lot of process steps between us and that money leaving the building. And, and so I, I think it's not a problem-solving exercise we want to go through tonight to decide where that money's going to be spent. Because to me, we have to revisit, even if we decide to spend it on a totally different kind of project, we have to revisit how we came to the conclusion that the Ammon Road project should be the, the next priority for that money before we send it somewhere else. So to me, I think we're talking in, you know, it kind of making a circular argument here, that it matters little whether we leave it right now labeled Ammon Road or we move it to unallocated. If we're not going to take it out of the budget and therefore change the tax rate, it, it doesn't, doesn't really matter at the end of the day. At least at the end of tonight. So again, you know, my advocacy is to just leave it with the current label because that's what our prior decision-making did with the knowledge that we can come back at a later time. And if, based on further analysis, we decide that Ammon Road's not the place to spend it in the next fiscal year, we can have opportunities to make that decision with, where we can have a focused, informed discussion about that.
I guess my point is that if we move it to unallocated, we don't have to undo it later. So we're not saying we're going to take the money away. I don't, if I'm understanding correctly, put it in unallocated and then we only have to allocate it later. It's only one process. We don't have to take it away from Ammon Road and then put it towards something else. I think it just makes it smoother in everybody's mind that we're not doing it for, it's being taken away from Ammon Road. It's an, it's unallocated. And then later, when we get another bite at the apple, then we can put it back or we can move it to where we have to do, wherever we want to use it. But we don't have to unallocate it from Ammon Road. Make sense?
So a couple clarifying questions. So one, nothing we're talking about is going to change the tax rate or the overall spend of the budget. We're just talking about whether we're going to have a higher unallocated fund than what he had planned. So is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So second, we could leave it unallocated all year if we want to. It's just the higher unallocated fund. So it could just sit there if we decide there's nothing we want to spend it on and it'd just give us more for something we don't know is going to come later in the year if we need to.
True.
Okay. I think there is a risk of keeping it in aligned to Ammon Road if we don't actually intend to go follow-through on that design. Because us putting it into a project is essentially directing staff to go and do a bid, spend money and time, of their time, to reach out and get a bid for construction and design, excuse me, for design. And it takes them their time. And then they're going to come to council and make a presentation that we're going to vote no on or whoever is what is being suggested. So I would rather not direct them to do that, leave it unallocated. And if we decide to come back with what we want to spend it on, have them work their time on that. Because if I was staff and I got this, I'm basically telling them, get to work on these projects. We're giving you money. And they will.
Right. And I, I think you hit on the head, council member, and that I was going to mention the, the flip side of that same coin, which is if it's, if it's removed for the budget, then the direction staff would have would be to not pursue that project unless otherwise directed.
The part of the budgeting process is to identify the priorities of where we want to focus our efforts. So although we're, we're making allocations, we're also identifying priorities as part of that process. So what Laura brought up is, I think, spot on, is with it. Not only are we giving direction to go forward with that project, but we're identifying it as a priority by including it as part of our budget process. So... Me, I, I go both ways on it because the original conversation that Laura brought up and looking at it, I mean, we've done a lot of work with our capital improvement programs, specifically with our roadways. This is one of the areas that was identified is needing reconstruction because of the safety concerns related to this road. And it is listed as one of our projects. And we're making efforts to complete those projects that are part of our capital improvements plan. That's one side of it. The other side of it I look at, and you bring up a very good point. Kendall County's in the process now of completing their transportation committee and making recommendations. And should we go and find out what are coming from those recommendations before we move forward? It may alter the path possibly, I don't know. I have no idea. It may be that, maybe even a co-joined process that we could do, the reconstruction of all. And maybe we get some assistance from Kendall County in doing this. I don't know. But there's probably enough questions related to it that maybe moving it to the unallocated fund and having it available if needed, but answering the questions before we determine it to be a priority and giving that to staff.
I think I've come full circle on this as well.
So, um... So we have a motion on the table, basically to move, remove from the budget $365,286, which was identified for design of the Ammon Road project and moving that to the unallocated fund.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussions from council? With that, then we'll go ahead and take a vote on it. All in favor of approval of this motion? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. But with that item, it doesn't change...
Our timeline.
Our budget overall. We've just taken one area of allocated funds and moved it into another. Is there any major adjustments that need to be considered before we approve the budget related to this? Because we made a change. As you know of? Hovindor?
Just to restate that, we took it from an allocated to Ammon Road to unallocated. So we did not change the total budget and there will be no impact on the tax rate.
Like probably the only thing I would suggest, based on the, the motion, is just, in the main motion, you might want to mention, I'll defer to the city attorney, but to say the, the amended budget or something to that effect.
Essentially, we'll...
To prove in the first reading.
That is the motion, yeah.
But that's really the only thing that...
We never had an original motion on the table. So on the budget.
Yeah. So we never, we never had the original budget motion. So we just changed what we're going to talk about.
So we amended it before we even made a motion on the budget. So it's right now, we just have one budget that's already been amended. Okay. With that, then I move to, or could I get a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 fiscal year budget ordinance?
Tell me.
Roy?
I second.
Cora? Any other comments from council? And Christine, I'll turn it over to you for the roll call vote.
Now, the budget, we're doing it. Now, when I call your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Maxton?
Yes.
Councilmember Stru?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizondo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerner?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Munchal?
No.
Five votes in favor and one opposed.
Okay. And then this item will be brought back for a second reading and on the 22nd of September. The next item that we have up tonight for consideration is consideration and possible action on an ordinance levying ad verum taxes for use and support of the municipal government of the city of Faros Ranch for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023. Scott, did you want to know more to add?
I'm good. My first question for me.
And in this, I think the, the question that may have come up is in this ordinance, what we are voting on is the actual tax rate.
Yes.
Any questions from council?
I actually have a question on the wording of the motion that was in our proposed agenda packet.
Okay, I'll, go ahead. I'll, I'll look at the...
The, the proposed motion made by staff for us to take into consideration is to increase our tax rate to 32.91 cents, which is a 1... our tax rate to 32.91 cents, which is a 1.01 increase in the rate, which is not true, right? Because the rate actually went down.
You are 100% correct. Unfortunately, that is the specific state statute guideline that we have to follow that compares to the no new revenue rate.
Okay, so over the no new revenue rate.
That's correct.
So it's increase over, so they're assuming that the no new revenue rate is what we would be normally adopting and we're going to do... Okay. Okay, so basically, we're saying we're doing, we're adopting something higher than the no new revenue rate by 1.01%.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Very clear.
I know.
Any questions from anybody here tonight?
Greg, I have a question.
Uh huh.
If we, if we're adopting the proposed budget rate or the proposed tax rate, this is what is going to cover everything that we have allocated in the budget? And there's no way that the no new revenue rate will cover all of that? Is that right?
Well, the budget that has been proposed, that we just voted on, was based on a tax rate of 32.91 cents.
Right. And that's what I want to make sure is clear.
Then could I get a motion that property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate 32.91 cents per $100 taxable valuation, which is effectively a 1.01% increase in the tax rate?
I'll move.
Boy? Any other comments from council?
Since you said it correctly, remember last time?
I was just going to clarify that I'm going to be voting no on this one as well because of the reasons that I don't agree personally with the budget. So just wanted to give a heads up on that one.
Christina, I'll hand it back over to you for a roll call vote.
Again, council, I'll call your name and please say yes or no. Mayor Maxton?
Yes.
Councilmember Stroup?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizondo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerner?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Menchau?
No.
We have a five to one vote in favor of that ordinance.
This item will also be brought back forth for its second review at the special meeting on the 22nd of September. With that, we'll move on to our next item of tonight, which is the next four items, which is consideration and possible action improving a resolution to fill places on our cities' boards and commissions. We'll take these one at a time, but I think Christina was going to give us a quick overview on what we're doing.
Yes, sir. At our recent meeting, I believe it was in August, council decided that for many of the current boards and committees, the applicants that were requesting to stay on the board, that we were going to reaffirm their positions. So right now, we're coming back for the next four agenda items. Number 14 is for the Building Code Board of Appeals, and 15 is for CIAC, 16 would be MDD, and 17 would be the ZBOA. ZBOA will be a little bit different because we did have some interviews, and there'll be more discussion on that, I believe. But right now, we're going to be looking to reappoint the current members on the other boards.
Any questions from council? Any questions from anyone here tonight on the process or what we're doing? So for council, at a previous meeting, we elected that all of the individuals that wanted to continue service on our boards and commissions, that we would reaffirm them. If there's anybody that has a concern that decision? Okay. And we'll start off with the Board of Appeals. And could I get a motion to approve a resolution reaffirming Jeeks Boston to place two on the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Chesley, in a second.
Second.
Scott? Any other discussion from council? Go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, then the motion is approved. Next, we'll move on to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. And could I get a motion to approve a resolution reaffirming Dana Green to place four, Paul Maven to place five, and Marcus Garcia to place six on the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Capital Improvement Advisory Committee?
I still move.
Okay. Second?
From Laura and Emily. Any other comments from council? Go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved. And to the MDD, could I get a motion to approve a resolution reaffirming members Roy Elizondo to place one, Laura Kerner to place two, Nicholas DiCiani to place four, and Mike Lovelace to place five
I'm listening.
On the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Municipal Development District Board of Directors. And Scott made the motion?
Second.
And from Chesley? A second? Any other comments from council? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion is approved. All right, next, we'll move on to the ZBOA, and bear with me on this one. So we have, we have two actions for sure that I will roll into the resolution for this. And the first is reaffirming the individuals that were on the board that want to continue to serve. Those individuals are Dean Gobitz in place two, Lawrence Rich Nichols in place three, and J.C. Taylor in place five. Currently, we have one position on the board that is vacant. With that, we have six individuals that are available to fill that position. Two of them are alternates Jonathan Lizenby and Roderick Terrell, individuals that we interviewed last week, Al McDavid, Michael Southworth, Doug Duncan, and Rob Waymire. Is there any individual from this list that a council member would like to nominate to fill place four?
You mean from the new applicants or the alternate?
All six.
Bump and alternate? I just don't know.
I'd like to nominate Jonathan Lizenby.
Okay, so we have a nomination, Jonathan Lizenby. Any other nominations?
I don't know when the appropriate time is, but I'm going to be abstaining from this vote, being that I'm a blood relative to one of the applicants. And although I don't think legally I have to, I feel personally like I should, so I'm abstaining from this.
Any other nominations to fill place four? With that, with no other nominations, then Jonathan Lizenby is identified to fill place Because he has been moved up to place four, we now have a vacant alternate position.
Just a question about order. Do we still need to vote on the resolution to appoint Jonathan Lizenby to place four?
I'm going to roll it all into one.
Oh, okay.
Let me explain that for you.
I'm trying to stay awake, so.
So now we have a vacancy in our alternate position. So we have four individuals that are available for it, for a nomination to this position. That's Al McDavid, Michael Southworth, Doug Duncan, and Robert Waymire. If there are any individual from this list that someone from council would like to nominate to fill the alternate position? I would like to nominate Al McDavid. Are there any other individuals? Okay, with that, with no other nominations, then Al McDavid will be our individual for Now, I move, requested motion to approve a resolution reaffirming Dean Gobitz to fill place two, Lawrence Nichols to fill place three, and J.C. Taylor to fill place five, and further appointing Jonathan Lizenby to fill place four, and Al McDavid to fill the alternate second position. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Boy?
Second.
And Emily, any other?
I have a question. Does that mean that Michael Ray and Roderick Terrell maintain their positions? Okay.
Not up for reappointment.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? If you're all in favor of approval of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion is approved. God for making that one easy. Oh, yeah.
That goes to you.
All right, that completes all the consideration items that we had tonight. Now it's time for announcements and reports. I guess we'll start off with council members.
One, I'd like to congratulate the Fair Oaks Ranch PD for winning the Back the Badge 5K again over Bernie and Kendall County. And for Councilwoman Stroup, you could show your medal. She came in second in her age group. No other council members from any other jurisdictions chose to race, so do share. And then as, I also raced in one in my group, too. So good showing on Fair Oaks Ranch.
Thank you, Laura. And Laura was, she said it, but Laura was also a participant and won in her age group also, so. When you said it, I didn't know if it came across real clear, and I know you don't want to brag, so.
But I do have to say, I will acknowledge, one police officer did beat me this year.
And then I...
Last year, they, who was it, who beat me?
Officer Maddes.
Officer Maddes, yeah.
And she went on to play a soccer game later that day.
Any other announcements from council members? I had two announcements for tonight. The first is just a recognition, this past weekend, we had our household hazardous waste event. And I'd just like to say that Kelsey Delgado from the city ran it, did a phenomenal job in my perspective. And the overall event was run flawlessly from the city, and have to give kudos to our city staff that helped out, and also to Republic Services for the team that they provided for running it. The second note that I have for tonight is on regroup. It's something that I talked about at the last council meeting. We are switching our emergency notification systems. We're switching from code red to regroup. And unfortunately, you cannot take the registration from, you know, it'd be too easy if you could do it this way, is take the registration from regroup and just move it over, or take it from red, code red, and move it over to regroup. You cannot do that. And so what we need is individuals throughout the city to go in and specifically register for regroup. Right now, both systems are running simultaneously. So both systems are being utilized, but on the 30th of September, the code red system will fall off and will no longer be used by our city, and the only system that we will have to utilize at that time is regroup. And so we're getting the message out. Casey's done a good job at getting message out on the multiple platforms. Today, we had an event up here at City Hall where residents could come in, register. But really, what I need to help in is getting the information out to all residents so that they're aware that they need to register for regroup and that we need to do that prior to 30th of September. I've done the registration. It took me less than five minutes. I mean, it's very quick, it's very easy. It's a lot easier than code red was when you registered for it. Did I miss on it? Any to add? That's all the announcements that I had. Is there any agenda item that a council member would like added to a future agenda, like annotated tonight? Okay. We will convene into executive session tonight pursuant to section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act. This is under Texas Government Code, a quorum of the governing body hereby convenes into closed session. And we're going to do this under section 552.072, under personal matters. And I'd just like to note that on the, this is a correction to what was on the agenda, which shows 552.071.
Mayor, I'm sorry, it should be 074.
074.
Yes, sir.
So I have now, the time is 7:54, and we are moving into executive session.
Mayor, we're back.
You hear me okay?
I hear a little bit of static.
Try again. How about now? Now we're good? All right, Christine, I have now, the time is 9:01. We are back in open session. During the time we were in executive session, there were no actions or decisions made that required any consideration in open session. Anything else that we need for tonight? Nope. Tobin, anything else? And I have the time now is 9:02 and we are adjourned.
Ready.